Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our town forum. We normally like to hold these forums every year. But unfortunately, last year because of COVID, we weren't able to hold it. And again, this year, we would have liked to held it sometime in July in the summertime. But again, with COVID regulations, we were unfortunately not able to do it. So we felt it was still important to have it whenever the regulations had opened up. So that's why we're here today. I want to thank everybody for registering ahead of time. As you know, COVID regulations, you can see six feet spacings and fifty people within the community center. So thank you again. What we're going to do is I'm going to introduce our members of council here, our CEO and other people that are here. What we're going to do afterwards, each member will be speaking a bit about their portfolios and the activities that have occurred in their portfolios. And then afterwards, we will be having some questions and answers. We're hoping that we did receive a bunch of questions. We asked people to put forth their questions so that we made sure that we wanted to address those questions throughout the presentation. And that's why if any of those questions are not answered during the presentation, just bring them up again and we'll try to answer them the best we can with the information that we have. And if you require more information, we will get back to you as well with the appropriate information for you. Okay, so the first thing I... Oh, the other thing I'd like to make sure too. This is a... It's a public forum. And it's very important that we have a proper decorum at the meeting. The councils are here to answer questions. We're not here for debates. If you have questions, please address myself. If you could identify who you are and where you live so that we can better understand the areas that you're living in. And we'll go from there. We also have a presentation this morning from Valley Fiber. Valley Fiber is a company that was able to... or is able to provide fiber optic lines for internet. Municipalities around Manitoba have been working very hard to improve internet service throughout Manitoba. And if you guys are on your internet, you know that the internet is very important to a lot of us. For people that were working from home, it even becomes more important because of information. And we have been approached and given... We've given them the right-of-way... Right-of-way access throughout the town. They'll be speaking more about this. And the right-of-way basically lets them provide their fiber optics throughout the community. So you'll be seeing in the next little while some work around the community. And it will be the fiber optics people putting in the cables and so forth. And again, like I said, they will be speaking very shortly. So we have coffee and we have some water there. So if you'd like some water or coffee, just please go on. The meeting is... The forum is till twelve o'clock. We want to keep to our timelines. I know everybody's busy. So we'll try to keep it till twelve o'clock. So first of all, I'd like to introduce our council. I have to the right of me Deputy Mayor Darryl Carey. Next to him, we have Larry Banks. And far left, we have Gene General. And next to her, we have Barry Hool. And sitting next to me, we have our CEO, Kerry Swanson. Behind him, we have our finance manager. We have Mark Brasley. I did it wrong, didn't I? Mark is our finance fellow and he's also our tech guy. He's really good with the tech. And we're videotaping this and we're live streaming it as well. So anybody at home can also watch this. And then we have at the front desk there, we have Arthur King, who is our program manager for the community center. So again, right now, I'd like to thank everybody for all the council members and staff to be here to put on this forum. Right now, I'd like to call upon Zach Durbrandt to do the presentation on the fiber optic system that's going into town. Do you want the lights turned down?
Yes, that would be great. All right, so like Mayor Tony said, my name is Zach Durbrandt. I live in a town called Gretna, Manitoba, which is right along the US border. I work for Valley Fiber, an internet company that is coming up north of Winnipeg and love to present to you guys what we're doing and what we're going to be offering in the community in the next couple of months. So I'll go to the next slide. You might be wondering how Valley Fiber started or when we started. We started off as a wireless provider called Vist, an internet service provider that did towers and radios. And we still have that aspect of our company. And we will bring towers to the area in the coming years to allow access to internet to people that are outside of the community that don't get the fiber lines. But we started running fiber in Winkler, where our home base is, in 2017. So our first customer went live in 2017 and we finished the completion of the fiber optic internet in Winkler in 2018. Since then, we have really exploded. We now service over 10,000 customers in southern Manitoba and we're expanding quite rapidly. We are currently in construction in, I think, twenty communities all over Manitoba. And we are just south of here in Clan de Boy right now, bringing the fiber line there. Once we're done in Clan de Boy and Petersfield, the crews are coming up here to continue the work in the Matlock, Winnipeg, and the San Diego regions. So you might be wondering what kind of internet that we get. Not all fiber is the same. So even within Winnipeg, there's a bunch of different fiber providers and we all do fiber slightly different. The industry standard for internet for both fiber, copper, and wireless is a technology called GPON. So pretty much all the other providers do this type of technology. They come, they bring a pipe to a town. Let's say a town this size, they might have a thousand megabits brought to the town. And from there, they split off and every single person in the town shares that internet. So you might... If you run a speed test at two in the morning and no one else is on, you're probably getting the speeds that you're paying for. But right after school or during really peak times, everyone's internet slows down because they're all trying to access that same pipe at the same time. What makes Valley Fiber very special and very different is that we use a technology called active Ethernet. So we bring a single fiber from Winkler, our data-centered Winkler, to every single house in every single community that we connect. So there's no more, "Oh, what's my neighbor doing? They are really heavy internet users, so my internet always sucks." There's no more of that. It is whatever you're paying for, that price is guaranteed or that speed is guaranteed just because of the way that we built this network. Yeah, so there's no up to. On none of our promotional material, on none of the agreements, does it ever say Valley Fiber promises up to a certain speed. You always get the speed that you're paying for. That, of course, is to the Wi-Fi router itself. Wi-Fi as a whole is a little bit more of a flawed technology and speeds vary widely. So if you are... If your router is down in the basement and you're on the very far side of your property, you're probably not going to get a speed test result that is exactly that speed. But we have the ability to run speed tests on hardline computers or on the router itself to show that you are always getting that speed. And I have Valley Fiber at home. And if people are wanting confirmations, I have lots of screenshots on my phone that I can show people that I am actually getting speeds that I'm paying for. So what does this... Why do we do a dedicated network? Infrastructure now in most of Manitoba is quite outdated. There was fiber or copper put into the ground a really long time ago and that infrastructure has not aged incredibly well. So everyone's speeds are suffering. And the way that it was built and implemented, it wasn't very easy to upgrade. I'll get into a little bit about our construction process and what we do to mitigate this. But Valley Fiber definitely saw a need that we couldn't just come in on existing infrastructure because there was just too many bottlenecks. So we bring our own pipe everywhere we go just to make sure that we control the whole process from your house to our data center so we can guarantee those speeds. Part of the reason why Valley Fiber was started, our CEO, Hank Wall, was tired of what he called "the brain drain" from Winkler. So Winkler is a pretty big city, but they saw that all of the young people were always leaving. They were starting businesses and then going to Winnipeg, or going to Calgary, or going to Toronto because there was not the needs that they needed. The needs that they had were not met with the current infrastructure. So he was tired of it and he wanted to do something about it. So he created this world-class internet to help people stay rural. We are... As a company, we're tired of all the people, all the money going to these major metropolises where all the resources seem to go. So we are bringing it to rural Manitoba, which we're pretty excited about. This is kind of a... I don't know if you're going to be able to see it from the back, but can show how that GPON works compared to how we do it. You can see all the fiber lines going directly to each house instead of one line going and then breaking off from there. The analogy that we always use is like a highway. So if you have decent internet at your house, let's say you have 25 megabits a second internet, that is your speed limit. So if you look, think about it like a highway, you are allowed to drive that fast on the highway. But if every single person tries to get on the highway at the same time, everyone's speed slows down. On our network, it is like you have your own guaranteed highway. You don't have to share it with anyone else. Just recently, we were voted Manitoba's best internet provider for gaming as well as second best in the country for gaming. I'm looking around the room and there's probably not all that many gamers here right now. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it is reliant on, "Oh yeah, I can headshot as many people as possible on Fortnite." Gaming utilizes things like latency and download and jitter. And that's all things that each one of us use every day. If we've done video calls, a really strong connection that has low latency makes it so there's not that awkward pause after you finish a sentence and then you wait for the person to hear you and you get back. Like it really speeds up more things than just gaming. But we were voted best and we like to show it off because we're really proud of the internet that we've developed and that we're bringing around to people. The only team that we lost to was a company called Beanfield Metro. They are out of Toronto and they service three condo buildings that are on top of their data centers. So they are not traveling nearly as far as we are. So it's a little bit of a stacked field. But you can see that we are miles ahead of other people like Virgin and Saskel Shaw, all the other people. We are miles ahead of them. And again, we're very proud of that. And the fact that we're bringing it to a place like Winnipeg Beach is not happening really anywhere else in the country. So in terms of services, we offer four types of services. We have your basic internet services, so what you use to watch Netflix or video calls, things like that. We are also now a TV provider as well. We are a TV carrier and we offer cutting-edge TV technologies. We can do things like 30-hour playback. So if you miss your channel, any one of our channels, you can go back 30 hours and watch it without recording. As well as we have a network DVR that you can record as well, just like your Shaw or your MTS can do right now. We offer a phone solution as well. We are a licensed phone carrier. We are able to port your existing number from commercially built to us. And phone prices start at $20 a month, which is pretty great for unlimited Canada Live calling. So that's kind of unheard of when you're thinking analog. It is a VoIP phone or a digital phone. Some people get scared about it being VoIP. I know a lot of people have had issues with VoIP connections in the past. Twenty years ago, when VoIP started coming in, all of the data centers were in like Calgary or Toronto. So you were using your slow internet to try to get to Calgary and back to make a phone call. On our dedicated fiber, it is lightning quick as well as all of the switching and the voice controls happen in Winkler. So you're not leaving problems for the home either. And we are a tier-three data center as well. So our data center in Winkler is built to specifications that the Pentagon could put some services in there and we would meet their needs. We have backup power, multiple redundancies of backup power. Our walls are extremely thick to prevent earthquakes and who knows what. I don't think we'll be utilizing that service as like needing services there. But what that does mean, I think we all remember the Thanksgiving storm. I don't know how it affected you guys up here, but down south, we were really out of commission. There was... All the power was down since everything is up in the sky or run on telephone poles. People that internet went down or power went down, they were kind of stuck without internet. Everything we do is in the ground and every spot along the way has backup power, things like that. So people that had batteries connected to their routers were actually still able to use the internet during that big power outage. And in our data center, we had power because we had our diesel generator backups. And we could see the lights going on all over southern Manitoba when people's generators would flip on and they were continuing to use the internet and be able to contact people on the outside. And that's all because we build everything to that tier-three standard. So you might be wondering how we get the fiber here. I know that's a big question. Everything we do is in the ground and we put everything inside of a conduit. So what I was saying before about how the infrastructure in place now is quite dated and it's really hard to upgrade, part of that reason is they just directly bury things in the ground so they can't easily pull it out and put it back in. Everything that we do is in that conduit. So if something would happen to the fiber, or let's say in 50 years, there's another new technology that is better, faster than fiber, we can come in, pull it out, push it back through, and we don't have to bring any more drills back to the community to do that work because we do it all now. So we bring a single fiber to every house, but we do only connect the houses that sign up for our services. So in a place like Winnipeg Beach, we, when we're doing the planning, we bring enough fibers to the community that if everyone would want to sign up, we'll definitely have enough fiber to do that. As well as we do think about how communities are expanding. But if you aren't signed up for the services, the drills go past your house. Doesn't mean that you can never get connected. Just once we leave a community, we wait for enough people to be interested to justify bringing the drill back to do some more work. So it might not have a cost penalty, but there's no timeline on when the drills will be back to do the work. But doesn't mean that you are stuck because we always do come back. Yeah, and this... All this means with the dedicated fibers, everything in the ground, that we do guarantee our speeds. I say it quite often, but no one else, there's no other provider that is guaranteeing speeds. And we say it pretty loud and proud because there's just no one else that can do it. So I'm gonna show a video next. It's gonna go through our construction process a little bit more as well as the installation process inside your house. It's just about two minutes or so and then I'll quickly wrap up. And then we can keep on going.
Hi, I'm Tim with Team Valley Fiber and I'm here to share with you how we get our internet from our data center to your home. Our fiber starts in our data center in Winkler, Manitoba, and we bring it through a main line to your community. For us to get our fiber to your community, we need to bring it down highways and through neighborhoods, down proposed routes so everyone's able to get dedicated fiber. Before we do any drilling in your community, we need to flag proposed routes to each home as well as each neighborhood so we know where we need to be drilling. When we get to your community, we go to an underground drilling method called directional drill. That allows us to run our fiber underground in conduits and then we don't have to disturb any of the grass or any of the ground above it. Once we have tested that line all the way from your home to our data center, then you are ready for install. When your home is ready for install and you have your appointment, we'll come to your home and the first thing we'll do is we'll ask you where you want your router to be located. Sometimes there's other infrastructure like telephone lines inside of your home, but that doesn't matter because we have a dedicated, own fiber line that we're able to run in a non-evasive way within your house. We're able to run our fiber line in attics, crawl spaces, through floor joists, as well as inside walls. That way, you'll have a very finished look that doesn't have any exposed wires. Once we've connected your router and the install is complete, we run a speed test. The connection test is to ensure that your speeds are strong and that they are guaranteed to what you've signed up for because of a dedicated fiber from our data center to your home.
Yeah, so that's just a quick little video. If you guys couldn't hear and you want to watch it again, if you just go to YouTube and type in Valley Fiber, we have a couple of other videos on there as well, including this one that you are able to watch. But at the end of the day, we are just wanting to come and get as many people connected on our fiber optic internet as possible in the area. If you are interested in getting connected, we will be here to answer some questions after the meeting is done because people often have questions and that's understandable. If you are wanting to get signed up in the area, if you go to ConnectManitoba.com, that has all the information for pricing and things like that. And we can get you signed up there as well. I will just make quick mention part of the reason why we are able to come to Winnipeg Beach as well as expand as fast as we are right now. We do have quite a substantial loan from the federal government. They are backing this project to come here to bring services to the community called the Canada Infrastructure Bank. There's a couple of articles online. We're very excited to be partnering with the federal government to bring internet to the underserviced or yeah, underserviced communities throughout Manitoba because there is such a need for better connections. So I think that's all the time I will take. I went over my timeline just a little bit, but we'll be here at the end if you guys have any questions at all.
Thank you, Zach.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll continue on and my portfolio is legislative. And with legislative, I sit on different boards. One of the boards that we sit on in fact is Community Futures, which has been working with different internet providers to get quicker internet. We, at the last forum, that was one of the things that people had talked about was the internet speeds and stuff. And we've been trying to communicate with Bell to improve their system. They're above lines. There are different providers out there right now, like Starlink, I think it's called, that uses a different system, satellite system and stuff. Community Futures looked at all the different providers and that. And we were fortunate that we did meet with Valley Fiber. In fact, I've been to their site there. They call it the cloud.
Yeah.
I can tell you the cloud, one thing that I noticed right away in the cloud, it's a bomb-proof type of space, but there's no bathroom in the cloud, just so you guys know. There's no bathroom in the cloud. You have to get out of that room. But just so you know, there is... We provide the right-of-way for any service provider that comes to us for that right-of-way. We've recently approved a right-of-way for Bell to run a fiber optic from their station to the towers on Kernstedt. So any provider is allowed to come in. We found their system here. Again, it's up to the individual to determine what system that they want in. They're spending, I think it's roughly $4 million of infrastructure within the town of Winnipeg Beach. And the good thing that we really, really enjoy is that there's no cost to the taxpayers to install the service. The one thing that we had to provide was a small piece of property. We have a piece of property on the west side that is not really used for anything. It's looking at a 40 by 40 piece where they're going to put their connection unit or their hub station where everything goes in and then goes further. And that's all we have to provide. And the hub didn't cost us anything. They put up the building, the fencing and so forth. So again, it took a long time and the different groups which I'll speak on, that was one of the main things that we were really pushing the federal and provincial government is to improve internet speeds. And lo and behold, we finally got, we're going to be getting quicker internet speeds. So the Community Future is also the group that, right now, there was that federal COVID grants that were going out, the 40 and the 20,000 loans for businesses around the Intralake. We've given over $4 million in loans to businesses and to farming, the farming community to keep going. It's a... It was a loan that $20,000 was forgivable. And we've done, like I said, over $4 million. Community Futures is a group that tries to help entrepreneurs to start up businesses. And we were able to provide that funding through the federal government to keep businesses going. The other group that I belong to is the Intralake Mayors and Reeves. This is a new group that has just started about a year and a half ago. It's all the mayors and reeves in the Intralake. We're similar communities and we have similar problems. We're different from like the Brandon area, the west area, the Brandon, the southern areas. So the group has gotten together and this is the other thing that we did was we lobbied the government for the internet. We've been lobbying the government for funding, additional funding for different communities. Like for example, there are three communities that are funded by permanent residents. Even though we have a high seasonal population, we only get funding for the permanent residents. And as you know, Winnipeg Beach, we're a year-round community. And we have to continue on with road clearing and so forth. So the funding is very important to us. And what has happened in the past, we only get the permanent residents. We have 1,100 permanent residents and a lot of times our government funding is based on that amount. So we've been trying to lobby the government along with the help of other Intralake mayors to change that formula so that we can in fact get additional funding for grants and so forth. Excuse me. Another group that we deal with is the South Basin Mayors and Reeves. These are the mayors from Gimli, Alexander, St. Clements, St. Andrews, Winnipeg Beach, the Nodder. And what we look at is the health of the lake. We've been lobbying the government for many, many years to improve the quality of the lake. We've put up a lake-friendly program. You can go into the Lake Friendly website and get information there on what you as individuals can do for your household and what businesses can do to prevent chemicals and other products going into the lake. So we've been working really hard with that. We've also provided funding for another group that we're involved with. the South Basin Mayors and Reeves. The South Basin Mayors and Reeves deals with water quality as well. And they have just recently, and they've been working on this, trying to get this project going for the last four years. And this is to improve the Netley Marsh area because the Netley Marsh area is the area that takes all the products that are coming into from all over Manitoba and outside of Manitoba and filters all the nutrients or the nitrogens and all these other products that are harmful for the lake. And because of the way the Netley Marsh has been destroyed, what they're doing is they're actually dredging part of the opening of the mound and they're building landmass areas in the Netley Creek to establish vegetation growth. And they've just completed, they finally got all their approvals to go ahead and do it and they've just completed the first phase of it and they've been dredging materials and pumping it in the Netley Creek area. And again, you can go onto the website and look up the Netley Creek Marsh Project. So these are things that you might not realize that Winnipeg Beach Council are promoting and encouraging because we all understand the importance of the lake. Our tax base is based on the viability of the lake. So we all work into making sure that our lake is healthy. What's the other one? Oh, also I sit on the Interlake Regional Health Authority and what we have been working on for a couple of years, ever since we lost our local doctor, Dr. Patel, who retired, we now have a nurse practitioner. It's a help, I think...
You go ahead and talk about that.
Well, it's just, we were able to, Larry will speak a bit more about it. We were able to secure a nurse practitioner in the same area. So now we do have a medical person available for people in the area. We've also been working with them and again, this is the whole Interlake region, all of, and even in the south, looking for, one of the things that we have found is that lack of doctors in the area. So we have been working very, very hard to establish a residency training center and we're hopefully getting very close to it. We've had a couple of hiccups with government funding, well, we're not even asking for government funding, but just government support for this residency program. And what they've found is that with a residency program, these doctors go into the rural areas and a lot of times they stay in those rural areas. So we're trying to get more doctors within the East Interlake Region Health Authority area. We're hoping that the facility will be built by next year and it will be located at the Selkirk Hospital and that will allow us to bring in more doctors, graduating doctors into the residency program because what happens is in order for them to get their complete doctorate, they have to go through a residency program. And the East Interlake Program is the only region that doesn't have a facility for them. We do now have, I think it was, we're up to four doctors that are in that program and they're going to be based out of Selkirk, but they will travel throughout the East Interlake area. Okay? I think that covers, oh, just so you know too, as a community, as councillors, we always try to take the opportunity to spend your money wisely. We always look for monies that we can leverage against grants. For example, this year we were very fortunate, and Darryl will speak a little bit about it, is we were able to secure funding for infrastructure such as sewer lines, water and so forth. We recognize that our infrastructure is older, things are developing in Winnipeg Beach and we want to be prepared. So we were able to leverage $50 on all the work that we've been trying to get accomplished. And again, like I said, councillor, deputy mayor, Darryl will speak a bit about that. So we've been working very hard to utilize your money as best we can and in some cases, we do get the grants, in other cases, we don't get the grants, but we keep on trying and that's why sometimes you'll see a delay on things. If we say we're going to do a project, it's usually based on some other grants that we can get in order to get that project completed. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Deputy Mayor Darryl Carey and his portfolio, the Public Works Utilities and Finance, and he'll speak on that right now.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor Darryl Carey and the Chair of Public Works and Finance. First of all, the question we have, the question that we're emailed to us, are we, do you bring the question up? We're going to answer or how are we doing that part?
No, you can just, a lot of the questions will, hopefully in your presentation, there could be some other questions answered in your presentation.
The Public Works Department consists of three full-time staff, six to eight part-time and then we have the Sewer Water Division, one full-time and one part-time. They all do a great job of maintaining our infrastructure, the roads, the grass and our equipment and the town's looking, I think, as beautiful as ever. Some of the expenses we have on board, you might not be aware of, like stuff like dust control. This year that might have been around $55,000, you know, the dust off the roads. We purchased a Kubota Skid steer this year. We traded in a Kubota sweeper. We bought a new backhoe last year. We have three main pieces besides our trucks and our mowers. We have a backhoe, a grader and the backhoe grader and the lower. And they're all in really nice shape and it's a great for the future. A project we have for next year is the paving of Eaton. We have $300,000 allocated in next year's budget to see that job go ahead. It's been pushed back a couple of years since other approaches have come up and funding and stuff. And as Tony mentioned, it's all, we're still seeking dollars to grant me for Eaton, but all the other projects were usually a lot of time able to do earlier because of the funding and 50% from the province. For one example, even a couple of big expenses coming up is some sludge removal. I believe that's a couple hundred thousand and we have matching funds coming for that just to increase our capacity for our lagoons. And we have a new well that was just put in, not quite finished, but there's some capital up, but that was a very costly project and that was also 50% funding. We have a new security gate with a car lock system going in at our plant on Kernstead and that should be at any time this fall, I guess, taking place there. Just to see if there's any other interesting, where we've been replacing because our plan is to do the Eaton asphalt and we've been replacing the sewer valves on Eaton because we don't want to do the asphalt and then after a year later tear it up because of replacing the valve. So we've been doing that and our manager Tim's been looking after that, replacing the valves and you replace them on Eaton. Let's just look at some of these questions that came in. One, I'll just touch on the finance side. One of the beaches is financially in really good shape for community of your size. It's always more challenging to have a small tax base, but we do a very good job of always looking for efficiencies and scrutinizing the departments and try to save what we can. We have, our reserves are quite healthy. We have three ventures. One on the sewer plant, one on the water plant and we have one on the public works fire hall. And the sewer and water, the venture comes up, it's paid off in about four, five years. And I think the public works building fire hall is about 11 years left, 11, 12 years, which will increase our capacity for more of our future infrastructure that needs to be improved. Some of our sewer line and water, stuff like that. Ventures. And I'm just going to touch on a couple of questions that came in. We had some questions came into the office on some issues. So one of the questions was, what is council going to do about sidewalk clearance bushes and stuff? This is the branching and stuff that hangs over the sidewalks in town. Like all communities, we all face these issues, trying to keep them clear so we can use the sidewalks. So it's what we see, we try to fix, but it's mostly complaint-driven. So there's a area where you walk and it's really bad, just call the office and we'll make sure that we contact the owner and have that cleared. Another question was, just going down the list here. Was Eaton going to be taken, has Eaton been answered? Can you enlighten me on where the bricks that were damaged on the boardwalk went? People only get a chance to have them and who receives the bricks? We have damaged bricks and some of them were faded or whatever issue with them. We repurpose them and we use them for little projects around town. Another question, what is the status of water and sewer system? Well, we have a major water upgrade in a couple of years to handle the sewer system. So they're both running, resolving work and maintenance to do it and our manager doing a great job, thank you those. And Carey might have something to add to that system themselves. They're functioning and working and I don't know if that's what they want to hear, what the actual question was. And then it says, about the third well, we have a third well to drill. It's not anything pumps right now, so we have three wells. And we're switching our first two back and forth, you know, utilizing both. And I think one is one maybe primarily used to pump to fill the trucks now. You know, and one of the wells there, so. And that's the third well with fire hydrants. We had some lower pressure with the fire hydrants, but I'm not sure exactly how this is addressing it, should help. We only have hydrants in the downtown or in the park. It's not through the town or anything. So we have a large water supply for our safety. I'm just seeing if there's any more to mention. Oh, I think that's the end of my report and thank you.
I would just like to elaborate a little bit on a couple of items that councillor Carey had brought up. One of the things, one of the questions was something, I know last year, we received a question or a concern about not having the boardwalk lights on year-round and why that was. The provincial park controls all the lighting in the park. And they had felt in the wintertime because of traffic, because of the pedestrian traffic flow and that and to save on money or energy, that they shut the switch off and they did not have the lights on. When we got that, we approached the province and spoke with them and we said, okay, what can we do? How can we work this out? If we get the lights out, our community is, we're getting a lot more active, proscatory skiing and walking. So we approached them and we were able to work out or negotiate a deal with them that, at our cost though. So we pay for the hydro usage of those lights during the winter months. So we thought that that was kind of a, you know, they take care of the summer because the summer months are, of course, they have a shorter one, so in the winter months, those lights will be on. And as far as I understand, that isn't changing this year, so those lights will be on. With regards to the well itself, we have three wells that we put in. We have had, those wells are fairly old. We have had some upgrades on the older two wells and with upgrades on some of the pumps in previous years. We felt it was vitally important, if we're getting government funding, that we utilize that funding to improve our water system. And in that system was also the flow rates of our systems for what we call the quick flow to fill up the fire trucks and stuff and we found that there was an issue with it. And we wanted to make sure that we have a brand-new well to supply water, safe water to the community. So $50, we got it for half the price, so we thought it was a great deal to do this kind of work right up front. There was also another grant which was the, are you going to be talking about this Barry or am I stealing your thunder?
Go ahead.
I think I'm stealing your thunder.
Well, you did it to me.
I know. The other one is our sewer pumps. Our sewer pumps are from our lift stations, were very, very old. We're trying to upgrade our system. And again, we, council had an opportunity with the Water Services Board to upgrade our sewer pump, our lift station pumps because they were really old and we probably won't be able to get parts or anything like that. So we invested in upgrading the two sewer pumps or lift station pumps. The other thing is that Darryl also talked about was our other infrastructure that we're having like curb stops and stuff like that. What we found, what we found is that it's sometimes difficult to know if your pump is working properly and the curb stop is working properly. Because if your curb stop and your pump is, if your curb stop's not working and your pump is working, the water will be pumping out all the time. The only time we noticed that there's a problem, and you might have noticed this this year, Manitoba Hydro was working on all the lines throughout Winnipeg Beach. Power was shut off. So what happened in a lot of these, well, in quite a few places, what happened was we found that people's check valve, that's the valve that prevents the sewer water from the town to seep back into the tank. We found that that wasn't working properly. So what happens is your septic tank fills up with sewer and overflows. The town goes off and turns what we call the curb stop off, which shuts the valve that prevents the water or the sewage to come back into your tank. What we found in that situation, there were valves that were broken. So we had to go in and replace it to make sure it was safe, that we had control. So those are the kind of things that you don't know about until it happens and, you know, unfortunately, it all happened this year with the power outage. So a lot of people had problems with the check valve. We have programs in place that we're checking when you get a pump out, they're checking your tanks and they're going to make sure that those things are operating properly. So if there's an issue with your tank, you could be notified that there's a problem with your tank and that you should maybe look into that. And that's also an environmental concern that the province wants us to enforce. So just preparing you guys, if there's letters that come out that says you may have a problem with your holding tank, I want you to be aware that that could be a cost that you could incur. Okay? I think the valve stems that Darryl was talking about on Eaton, I know we've been talking about paving Eaton for a couple of years, but again, we did not realize that we had those curb stops on Eaton. They were under the ground and we had to go out and test all of them. We're fortunate that most of them were in good shape and we didn't have to replace them. So there's some savings there. And again, we're committed to looking at doing Eaton next year. We've been working on it. The one stop was the ensuring that the valves were working. I think we got two left to complete and then by next year. And in fact, I've asked Carey to put it in our committee of a whole meeting agenda, a discussion on getting quotes to do that project and to do the sidewalk as well. So now I'd like to introduce councillor Larry Banks, Protective Services, Environment and Public Health. I hope I didn't steal any thunder.
Hi, I'm Larry Banks. I'm going to touch on a few things such as fireworks, bylaw officer, speed limits. I'm going to talk about the clinic and the fire department. I'll try and explain the best that I can here. Upon becoming a councillor two years ago, one of the major complaints was fireworks. And so we had numerous meetings about that and we found that we would change the bylaw to address that issue. And after implementing that, the complaints for fireworks and everything had decreased dramatically. It was a good thing. We know that there were some people that were concerned about it and would like to have them at certain occasions and we did get a request here, would council consider having fireworks? And that is something we will take to the agenda at a future meeting and talk about that. Bylaw officer. People have been concerned about the hours, how it works with them, how do we come up with his hours and things of that nature. The bylaw officer right now has moved up to 15 hours per week from 11. His hours are flexible, so he may work more on a weekend, like a Saturday night, Friday night, what have you, than he would on a Monday night. His hours are, are, they're flexible, so, uh, he may work more on a weekend, like a Saturday night, Friday night, what have you, than he would on a Monday night. So it, 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 it basically goes on events, uh, complaints and just straight visibility. And that's how we try to move him around. We have some issues at the, uh, the fire hall, so we increased his hours a bit more to stop controlling that area and, uh, make sure that nobody was drinking and things like that when it appears. So, and what we do is we take a look at the, we, we monitor the, the bylaw officer on a regular basis. We, we sit with the C A O and we talk about different things and, uh, it, it works pretty good. We can move him around, he's very good at doing that and he'll even, uh, you know, take animals, bring them in. I don't know how many stray cats it was this year, I had those numbers, I should've shared them with you, but, uh, he, he does a lot there. And Kerry, our, our C A, C A O really works closely with him. Every year we sit together and we, we budget what we feel we should have for hours for him. So that's how we come up with the hours that we will allocate to the bylaw officer. I went right off everything here. So anyways, um, our bylaw officer has responded to two hundred and fifty calls since April of this year. That's about forty, forty calls a month, average of one point three, three or something per day. Council now is, we're talking about enforcing more laws. So when we talk about, uh, things like parking issues such as a misuse of handicap parking, uh, parking too close to the railway tracks, that was a big, big issue this year. Uh, two hour parking, so things like that, we're gonna get stricter on that. So council will be, uh, talking about that. We have started our talks on it and we're gonna continue to enforce that. Another issue that we have, uh, stricter enforcement coming into is the overgrown brushes, trees and stuff that go on, that approach onto our sidewalks and stuff like that. That has been something that's been going on for years. We've talked about, really hasn't been enforced that well. Public Works Forum at, Forum and his crews, as they, they go down the streets and stuff, will be sharing that information with Kerry and Kerry, Kerry will share that with the bylaw officer to try and, uh, enforce that a lot more. The, they'll, there will be, uh, probably fines and stuff that are involved in that after first notices and things of that nature. So we are gonna really look at that. We wanna make sure that the sidewalks are clear so people who walk, they'll be infected with mosquitoes and getting scratched up, things of that nature. So we are really gonna look at that. Uh, we are having some issues come and go with, uh, unlicensed off-road vehicles. That thing's been happening for many years and, and some people really, really abuse that. Uh, that is an R C M P issue because the roads are, um, in, uh, they're, uh, provincial highways. So there's only so much we can do. The R C M P have to get involved with it. Our bylaw officer does try to find out who the offender is and we make note of that. We share that information with the R C M P. So it's something that we look at and we, our hands are kind of tied to what we can do with that. So we encourage the, the, the people to call the R C M P if they see somebody driving recklessly on an A T V down the street, things of that nature. So, uh, we have to work together on that. And the R C M P, uh, we will sit down, have our meetings and we'll tell them what, what's happening and they will look at different areas if it's for speeding or for violations like that. Speed limits, oh, that's another big one. Our last forum we have, we talked about speed limits on Highway nine. And, uh, just to refresh some, some people's, uh, memories on that, the, the speeds were a lot lower. The council at that time approved that the speeds could be raised to what they are today. Well, since that time, the taxpayer was one of those speeds reduced. And I'll tell you, it's been painful for us to try and get anywhere with the provincial government. They have to do studies and I think Kerry's been in touch with them. The C A Os prior to Kerry have been in touch with them. Uh, they do some kind of study and then they, they'll come back and say yea or nay. So we are waiting for a study right now, if I'm not mistaken. So what that is, we wanna go back to the old speed limits on number nine. We've also talked about crosswalk. Is that something that, uh, they would consider as well? So that would take a lot more thought as to if they were to improve that or go and all that kind of stuff, so it's, but we have put it in there. Then we talk about two twenty-nine. We have, uh, the speed limit's coming from ninety on the highway and it reduces down to fifty right away. It really doesn't give you a fair amount of time to gradually slow down. We felt it would be better to go from ninety to seventy to fifty. Uh, there's lots of families there with little children, carriages and stuff like that. It's just, it's, it's a terrible, terrible sight that an accident can happen so easily. So we, we feel very strong with that. We're in talks with highways on that. And then we went as far as buying a little reader sign. It wasn't a lot of money. We bought it at, uh, the A M M convention. We thought it was a, a great device that would, we could post and, and we got three locations that we use. We use, uh, uh, on two twenty-nine, we've tried it and we hold it there for three months or try and collect data. This data, we can share with the R C M P if we see spikes at certain times with people speeding. Uh, we can, we can use it for our own personal things and we can also use it for highways to build our case with them. The, uh, we have one unit with three brackets, I think, right now. We share that bracket on, um, number nine highway and also at the school. Like I say, stays for three months and moves around and collects the data that way. And it was quite interesting, the data that we have found just by using it on two twenty-nine. And now we're waiting for the school and then it moves on again. It's a good tool for us. And I think the sign itself, by just being up there and blinking away, that people know that they are speeding, will reduce the speed with some people, not everybody, but some people. We, we also have a new clinic in town. I'm sure everybody's aware of that. We have a nurse practitioner, practitioner that works, uh, how many days? Uh, Tuesdays and Wednesdays from nine thirty to three thirty. And the office is always open, uh, during the week for five days a week, uh, taking appointments. And you have to have appointments because of COVID for sure. So that's been new to us and we're excited about having that. Fire department, I'll tell you a bit about the fire department. Uh, right now we have sixteen active members. Eleven of those members have a level one certification. Uh, level one focuses on the firefighting basics and everything you need to know, uh, to go into a burning structure. Firefighter survival, search, rescue, ropes, knots, fire behavior, ventilation, uh, S C B A, self-contained breathing apparatus and personal protection equipment, water supply and cold weather fighting. And that's just something I wanted everybody to be aware of. It's, it's, it's interesting what we have in our own backyard there. These firefighters are really, uh, training and, and, and they, they also do training exercises every second Sunday, every second Tuesday. And these may be, uh, where they take a hurricane, these pump and they pump from the weight and they test it, all their equipment and see how, how it is to, to put on a fire like that. They do, uh, fire burns on cars, on houses and those are, uh, exercises are done on Highway two twenty-nine. I don't know if you know that we do have a little piece of property there that we, uh, share with Public Works and the fire department uses it for, uh, they have a C C A N there so they can have, uh, an exercise like it's a house burning down, you know, uh, they have cars there where they have to use the jaws of life on. And the Public Works Forum and the fire chief are gonna get together to, uh, look at, enhancing that bit so it looks a bit more beautiful rather than seeing burnt cars and things like that. So it's, so we are gonna focus on that, try to, you get, uh, clean it up a bit. Uh, we have five members that are attending the next level one course in the department and they, that will be, they will be teaching it right here. One member has a level two certification, level two builds on level one training and includes, uh, flammable liquids, flammable gas fires, suspicious fires using foam and public education. Seven members are trained in material, hazardous material. Five members trained in vehicle extraction. Uh, we are, uh, they are looking at more courses through, uh, two thousand and twenty-two as well. One member has emergency service instruction, instructor level. One member has fire investigation. All members have incident command one hundred. Uh, this year they have responded to twenty calls. The amount of calls in two thousand and twenty was fifteen, so it's been five more calls since then, since last year. Three of the firefighters have traveled to Davidson Lake. It was a northern fire that just, uh, happened recently. And we're very proud of them that, that they put everything aside and did that. The, they assisted the Manitoba Wildland firefighters in the office of the fire commissioner. Uh, the members, uh, were Andrew Good, uh, Theresa Melanick and Travis Taylor. So I'm, I'd say thanks to them. And then COVID nineteen brought new challenges to our fire department. They needed to change how they respond to calls to protect themselves and others. Working with the O F C, the Officer of Fire Commission, um, the E M O, emergency measures, uh, U G L A's were put into place for pandemic response. So that was a whole, uh, bunch more training again. This department applied for and has received forty-three thousand dollars from the provincial, uh, government through a fire protection grant. The grant is being used to construct a mezzanine in the fire hall, which will be used as a training room. So the, the training room mean, meaning to, to learn these different, uh, uh, things, not, not an exercise room. It's a, it's a training room to, to, to learn how to, uh, get to different levels and things of that nature. This room allows the department efficiently deliver theory instructions, participate in online meetings, trainings, host training courses, mutual aid meetings, uh, things of that nature. Uh, the design of the training room will also allow the town of Winnipeg Beach and emergency measures to utilize as an emergency operations center should the need arise, which we feel is very important. Leaving that, going to environmental, uh, just to share with you that the town of Winnipeg Beach has, uh, joined, uh, town Victoria Beach, R M Valux Avenue to campaign with, uh, to the A M M to lobby two senior levels of government in implementing a plan of actually dealing with zebra mussels, uh, in Lake Winnipeg. We have written a letter of support for this as well. And that's about all I have for it.
Thank you, Larry. We'll wait for the questions at the end, if you don't mind. Okay, I just a couple of things too, I just wanted to bring up. The mezzanine funding was, uh, for the mezzanine area was a hundred percent funded. So there was no cost for the mezzanine facility, uh, for that. Uh, the other thing too with regards to zebra mussels, uh, since the zebra mussels were introduced, there hasn't been very much talk about it and, uh, communities are still impacted by it. However, the provincial government, and I'm not sure if you're aware of it, did, did purchase, uh, pieces of equipment, uh, one for this side of the lake and one for the Grand Beach side of the lake, which is a, uh, which is like, I guess, a, a bee sweeper that picks up the zebra mussels. So they do, do that along Winnipeg Beach as well. Uh, they also, and within the other areas that they look after, they do use a sweeper for that. Okay, just a little bit of background information on that. The other thing I wanted to just point out with the enforcing of bylaws. Enforcing and finding of bylaws is, uh, is a, is a very tricky thing because there's protocols that we have to follow. I'm gonna say, let's use the grass cutting, for example. If we get a complaint for grass cutting, we go and look at it. We have to send out a registered letter to that person. We have to give them the opportunity for a period of time to have that grass cut. If they don't, with grass cutting, if they don't, then we can in fact, hi, we have a contractor that will go out there and cut the grass and that homeowner will then be billed for that service. Uh, that's a similar type of thing that we're looking at with, uh, with, uh, with the brush clearing, as, uh, Larry had mentioned. It's something that we're looking at. There has been several letters that were sent out to homeowners to clear their brush and we've done that before. And brush, of course, grows every year just like grass, so it's important for the individual to do that. We're looking at the best way of implementing a fine or how we can, uh, go there and do the trimming. Because then what happens a lot of times, again, we've been seeking, we have to seek legal advice because we're cutting somebody's branches and trees down, they're overhanging, uh, there could be issues with that. So we wanna make sure that we do that. So it's not that we're not concerned about those issues, it's that we have to follow certain, uh, protocols. And unfortunately, those kind of things take, take a long time. As you can tell with different programs, like Larry had mentioned with the, uh, with the province and speeds and that. We've been fighting this, what, about, well, almost four years now. So it, unfortunately, you know, with changing government and other things, COVID and everything else, these things have been delayed. So we're always trying to get these things moved along. At this time, I'd like to introduce, uh, Barry Hall. He'll be speaking on recreation.
Morning. Um, I think it's like, you know, Larry, by the way, is very detailed. Mine is a little, has a little less detail due to COVID, which really, pretty much, you know, decimated the rec program for the last year. But I will talk about some of the questions that, that were brought up with me. I wanna take a few minutes to talk about the past before I talk about the future regarding recreation. Um, my role as rec chair and as a councillor prepares for a new year, I think we need to remember that much has been accomplished, um, by many people before us. Pat Reed, for example. I just, I wanna make mention that, that there's been a lot of dedicated councillors and town people that have put a lot into this community. So I wanna talk about the future, the future that will be built or we will begin to build for the remainder of this term and into the next election. Before I talk about what we might do as a council, I'd like to talk about how I hope we will do it. Many of you heard me say this before, but it bears repeating, outstanding communities are not built for people, they're built with people. And as recreation, I believe community involvement is, is utmost importance with, with community recreation and the community center itself. I wanna talk a little bit about Daryl, when Daryl asked me about the fire hydrants. We have twenty-four fire hydrants and about sixty-five, uh, water valves, uh, with utility. Twelve of the twenty-four fire hydrants are now fifty-plus years old. That being said, um, most likely need to be replaced with a cost of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars per, per hydrant. Again, that's estimated. I would like to outline some of what I personally like to see taking place over the next two years and where I believe some of our efforts must be placed. As Chair of Recreation and Co-Chair of Public Works, I wanna share where we are currently and where I'd like to see recreation head. My priority is to ensure our rec director and his team have the tools required, clear direction from council and community involvement to make our recreation programs as successful as they can be. We need to stop doing things the same we always have and start moving forward. So my plan is putting together a community-based recreation committee, uh, for the community center and other area-based activities. To me, that's very important. We need community input, we have to have that. We need to think about other recreational amenities such as the idea of an all-season complex, uh, which sport groups and the residents have supported. Currently, we have Badland Pickle Ball, the So Happy Arts Club, and in the past few weeks, the Breast Cancer Riot, uh, the Show and Shine and amazing bandstand that really brings our community together. We also must move forward on the fitness center. It's a must-have for this community. We simply cannot sacrifice, uh, one sport for another. So when I talk about the multi-complex, um, I, I, and I wanna repeat that, we cannot sacrifice one major sport for another. Uh, we need to accommodate all of us and, and that's really big on, on, on my plan and I hope all of councils as well. I know it won't be easy, but I think with proper planning, proper budgeting and forward thinking, this will happen. That said, we will have ice for the upcoming season. The ice plant repairs are near completion. And we are in the discussion stages of finding a way to accommodate all recreation activities for everyone. You know, I, I look around and I do see, uh, people who have a track record participating in community building, volunteering and helping others in need. And, and again, this, this really needs to happen to, to make our recreation program as successful as possible. I have no doubt that, that we will make these things happen. Uh, and remember, this is where environmental comes to play. So I, I really encourage people to get involved with the recreation, get ahold of Alan. If, if you have questions for Kerry, please get ahold of Kerry because, you know, I, again, I, it's very personal for me. Our recreation, our sports, no matter what the sport is, I, I believe we should all be participating with our community center. It is the hub. I, I truly believe that, it's the hub of our community. So thank you for being here on this important date, uh, and embracing our passion, our optimism and our hope for an even better Winnipeg Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Just, uh, there was just the one question with regards to, uh, the toboggans life. Something that we had looked, uh, looked at, if there was a grant funding available for that. And I think that's something that maybe council will, uh, will look and see what kind of funding is available for, uh, those kind of things. Like I had mentioned before, our staff, uh, recreation staff and our C A O, we're always looking at opportunities for any projects that we do that we get fifty cent dollars because we are a small are a small community and we want to stretch our dollars as much as we can. And everybody around this table here, we're all taxpayers and it's our money as well. So we really do do diligence on opportunities that we can get grants. In some cases, just so you know, some grant opportunities have a very limited application time. So we can get notified three weeks from, or three weeks prior to the deadline of the date and we need to get all this information and sometimes we can't get that information. And that's why it's always important, when we're looking at projects, we prepare our projects in case those grants come up, we have all that information ready to go so that if there's a short timeline for applications, we can throw those applications in. So I just wanted you guys to be aware.
That's all the deadlines, all the grants.
Deadlines, slow deadlines on the grant.
And the grant will come in and you have like two, three weeks and sometimes they'll say you need to reach out to this, you just don't have time, you can get all the stuff together. Often, there's more time, but some grants are a very short window.
Yeah. I'd like now to introduce Councilor Jean Genron, Economic Development, Heritage and Tourism, to speak.
Thank you, Tony. I'd like to thank whoever put you together for saving the best for last. I am the Chair of Economic Development, Heritage and Tourism, and Councilor Larry Banks is on the committee with me as well. It's only going to show up three months, which has been very busy, so I do want to thank Larry and Kerry for catching me up to speed on some things so that I could prepare some information for you today. With economic development, we do have a couple of projects in works, in the works that I'd like to update you on. We are in the process of finalizing a developments agreement with Dairy Development for a forty-four lot housing development called Lake for the States that is located at the west end of Lake and Strohway. And then another project that we have, that's a three-phase project that is ongoing, but Phase One completed. It is a beautification project on the east side of Prospect, running from, it runs parallel to Prospect and it's running from Spurs on the south and then running north all the way to the end of Marina at Boundary Creek. Phase One has been completed, which was the laying of line, a limestone walking path. We, Phase Two is the asphalt part surface. We had hoped to secure some financing for that through a grant. We were not successful in obtaining the cost-sharing grant that we'd applied for, so we will continue to pursue grant applications and we will look at further funding on our end on this project when we are reviewing this for our 2022 budget plan. We would like to have that phase of project tackled at the same time as the paving of Eaton in order to save some money and having the two asphalt projects done at the same time. The town owns a portion of land in the park area, which is commonly referred to as postage step corner, which is at the corner of Prospect and Park. So until I was on council, I thought that whole area was provincial park, but there is a piece that we own. So the final phase of this project will involve beautification of that corner with the idea of hopefully making it a meeting place for members of the public to enjoy. In order to support large-scale economic development, the first thing we need to ensure is that we have infrastructure in place to support that Tony mentioned, that our infrastructure is aging and we are certainly looking at improving on our sewer infrastructure. Currently, with some of the work that's being done, we are able to meet the needs for the Dairy Development Lake with States. However, we will need to continue to improve on our sewer infrastructure and are going to be able to look at any future long-term, large development plans. Or another option that we could be looking at is if there is an investor who is looking at a large development plan, that they would have to invest in the infrastructure in order to support the development. We're very fortunate that our new CAO has a very strong economic development background. So I'm certainly looking forward to working with Kerry leading up to our budget meeting and as a council, being able to have some strong, serious discussions on some long-term economic development plans for the community. Kerry's background will certainly help steer those conversations. Under Culture and Heritage, we have a number of heritage plaques around town that are placed to highlight historical events, things, people involved in our community, things such as Eddie Walker's Corner, William White, there's a plaque with the history on Boundary Creek, and it's also one of our teaching wall at Laurel and Grove. They're certainly starting to show their age, so Public Works are in the process of removing and all of these, taking them indoors and refurbishing them. And then once refurbished, they will be on a sort of rotational inspection basis so that we're able to maintain them at the level that they will be at when they're put out after being refurbished. And the last thing I want to talk about is tourism. We all know it was a very difficult 2020 and start to 2021 summer season, but we were finally able to see COVID restrictions changed, which allowed the return of activities to the bandstand. We saw the return of Free Fitness Saturday stands on the bandstand, two very successful outdoor vendor markets, and our manageable one-fifty celebrations a year late, and our Canada Day celebrations in September. Both of these included spectacular firework displays. My compliments to Alan and Arthur, the recreation team, who were trying, Alan trying to stay on top of things every time there was a new announcement and the fact that they were able to pull off all of this with very short notice to the change in the COVID rules is certainly kudos to both of them for the hard work that they did and the community support and the crowd that they grew. Clearly, people were missing these things. As well, we had a very successful car show last weekend that saw about four hundred cars in the community. It was at the registration table and a lot of car owners were just so excited to finally be able to get out and show off, show off their cars, meet the people that they normally spend very little of their summer time with. So again, it was a huge success. One of the biggest boosts for tourism in Winnipeg Beach this past year has been the opening of the Rose A Beach House. I had the opportunity to tour it with the owners, just after she opened earlier this summer. It's inspired by nineteen-sixties California, and there are five-suite retro chic motel located across from the beach boardwalk. Within hours of opening, their online reservations were completely booked for the summer season, clearly an indication of the limited accommodations in our community. And the Rose A Beach House actually provides year-round accommodations for visitors to Winnipeg Beach. So we're very happy to have them in the community and certainly filling a need that I think has been discussed or raised quite often in these forums as a need for short-term accommodations. Thank you all very much for coming out. Community gave me something that is important to me and that I value in my role as a counselor so that I can certainly know what's important to members of the community and help address them. So thank you for giving us your side of thinking for us.
Thank you, Jean. Just wanted to elaborate on two points, sorry, two points. One is, again, our infrastructure, how vitally important our infrastructure is and ensuring that our infrastructure is working properly in order to accommodate further development. Further development, what happens is we get more revenue from the tax base and that's the intent so that we can keep the community going. We were very fortunate, again, with monies that we were receiving. We were able to scope out the entire, what we call the gravity system, the downtown system. We were able to scope out and see what kind of damage or maybe collapseion that may have occurred in those lines. Again, those lines are extremely old and we were very fortunate, we had the video and we were able to look at the video. We were able to identify two locations where then we had a bit of a problem that we are undertaking to repair and have our gravity system working properly. So you'll probably see a little bit of construction. One was around the fire hall area, another one was around the park area with our main sewer lines that we're looking at and we want to improve. And again, funding from the federal government or the provincial government really helps with those things. And this is the time you want to do those kind of works is when you've got those fifty cent dollars because it's a lot cheaper for all of us. The other thing I just wanted, and one of the questions that came up here, two questions that were my questions. One was with economic development is one is, are we talking or are we looking at improving Robinson Avenue, our main street basically area? Just so you know, we've had just a preliminary discussion on what our vision is for the front street. As you know, we've had those black barricades there on the ground and we've had the, we've had the, last, the year before, we had the boardwalk, the wooden boardwalk. We want to look at more of a permanent solution and council will be going into further discussion on what maybe the vision could be for that front street and how we can avoid those kind of things and maybe look at an extension of the sidewalk. But again, we're looking at getting professional help to give us an idea of what kind of look that we want for the downtown area and the expenses involved in that. So that's one thing that we're doing. A person had asked a question with regards to the cement pad in the provincial park near the water tower. That is the provincial park's property? That used to be a restaurant and that used to be other things in there? That's their path? I know at one time they were talking of putting up a picnic structure up there. So again, it's up to them, we have no real say unless they come to us and ask us what they'd like to see there. So again, it was a picnic shelter that they were looking at and I think that's something that would be really good for that section as well. Okay, on that note, I've talked a lot. I'm gonna leave it up to you guys now for some questions and answer. I have the gentleman at the back there first.
Yeah, actually, I was just kind of wondering what the forecall was for asking questions?
Yeah, if you could give us your name and your address.
Jan Stentel, I've been at Five Ten Park for approximately eight years now, part-time resident. This year, we're actually making the turn to full-time. So I live on two-twenty-nine and I know what the issues are there. Like I would think the effectiveness of that sign, that little blinking sign that you have, I was gonna ask if there is any data collected, I would love to see it because in my mind, it's basically out of control. It is, like, let's be honest about it. If anybody on council comes to my front step for a few hours and just watch it, it is maddening. You did mention to perhaps call the RCMP. I had them on speed dial, just, you know, speed around parks, speed around parks, speed around parks. There is no satisfaction in that and in, I can recall at least three times in the time that I've been there, I've seen RCMP vehicles not adhering to the speed limit. You know, no lights, no signs, they're just cruising into the stops on that field. So you're basically peeing against the wind when you pop out, in my opinion. So, here, a little bit of scum, ah, what did I want to say? The speed limit being raised on nine. I was at the last town forum that he said highways approached Winnipeg Beach and asked if they could increase.
Correct.
So that was a Winnipeg Beach decision to allow?
That was based on a recommendation from the, that was based on a recommendation from the province on their study that they had done and they had looked at the whole study right all the way to Gimli on that study and that was a council decision at that time based on their report to us.
On their report?
Yes.
Now, wouldn't you want to sort of make it a town decision? I realize you guys are elected officials, I know that, so I'll just step back and say, I want to thank you guys for stepping up and being leaders in the community, it takes a lot of balls and, well, excuse my French, but did you have to put yourself out there? So thank you for that, but you also are the representatives and the people that we come to, so.
Yeah, well, thank you very much and what I can tell you is that, you know, sometimes the decisions we make, we look at decisions that, when we make a decision, we always try to keep in mind the benefit for the town and so forth. Sometimes it doesn't work out. Sometimes we make a mistake and as you can see, we're trying to correct that mistake and that's what we do, you know? We've admitted to the mistake that, you know what, there is a concern and maybe we should have looked at a different approach. So for that, I apologize for that kind of thing, but we have been trying to work with the province and trying to get that resolved.
Yeah, it's hard to go about, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's seventy, you might as well call it seventy.
But Larry, it comes with Larry Banks can comment on what we're doing with the data, if you want, Larry.
Yeah, sure.
Well, the data collected, we want to share that with the RCMP. We want to show them, say, this is the proof, this is what's going on and we need you to be there at these times. Okay, so we may see, see, we can break it down per day. So Friday at six to seven o'clock, we get lots of travel down there at high speeds. One of the things we haven't done is, and I want to kind of look at it, is going west. I like to get those speeds because what I understand is that you're getting gravel trucks and everything that are speeding heading out of Winnipeg Beach.
Oh, yeah, I can hear it accelerating.
Yes.
You know, I live in three floorways rolling. I can hear it accelerating at the tracks, it doesn't matter. They're eighty kilometers an hour heading out, right? That's...
It's bad and it's painful having to deal with the provincial government this way and if there's anything we can do to fast-track this, we definitely will do it. I, for a living, I drive a school bus and I drop the kids off on two-twenty-nine and it terrifies me to have a child walk across that street. You know, because these people are barreling along, they see the yellow lights, they ain't slowing down, you know? So we keep the kids locked in there until the car comes to complete stop because even if they're just rolling a bit, they may just go through it. And people have done that, they've slowed down but just roll through. When these kids cross the front, they don't look.
I've slowed down to pull into my driveway and I've had people pass me on the gravel. Like pull around and, you know, absolutely no accountability, anything.
Okay, what we're gonna do, we're gonna, I think we've kind of answered your questions. So we're gonna...
Just wanted to add one thing to that. Just wanted to, you know, we have, over the years, several times we passed the RCMP to set for it earlier and I have heard some...
Yeah. You mentioned you were thinking of making staging that was speed limit at ninety-seventy there. Now, will the speed limit remain fifty within Winnipeg Beach?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the town...
This would be in addition to, so perhaps maybe that ninety could start at McKenzie Road and then the seventy comes in to have them gradually slow down.
My last thing to say, you know, there's a sign, who doesn't know it's a fifty kilometer an hour zone. You take your foot off the accelerator, you coast down to fifty and then continue out.
The people aren't doing it.
Yeah. I can tell you that, again, council's well aware and we have been working so hard trying to get this done and that's why we got the sign so that we can prove to the province and prove to the RCMP, we can pick up, we can pick up the times and dates and have the RCMP designate their times to that. So thank you very much. I have a question right here.
The question was for that. I'm about two forty-five older, so I'm three off the final. You talk about a traffic step, is it starting or the traffic step has been started?
No, it has been started. In fact, we did receive an email with regards to that and I know Kerry has responded to that. Maybe you can just...
Yeah, the province has done numerous studies over the last ten years and the data comes back the same all the time. So what they're sharing with me is the accumulation of data they have and then we're gonna do the analytics on it and then we'll provide a report back to them on what our recommendations are. So far, what they do with their studies is they make their own recommendations. The advice I've been given from the province is perhaps our council now will look at that data cumulatively and then come back with our proposal on what we would like to see. It's the first time they've asked us to do that, so I think it's a positive.
And we're only, we can only recommend, we can't, they have the time to say what the data term is needed. We can make recommendations and stuff, but we don't have the power anytime.
Okay, is there anything the community can do to help your cause when it comes to things like that? I'm not talking about, you know, doing big rallies or anything, but can you get any action by getting us involved?
Well, talking to the local LMAAs and that kind of stuff.
Highway traffic.
Highway traffic people and that, calling them and saying, look, we've got a problem here, more phone calls, go to them. You know, they're gonna, they might turn around and say, again, you gotta talk to your town about that. But in reality, if they get the complaints to their office and, you know, they know that people are really concerned about it and we've tried, like I said, we've been at it for four years at it.
Can I have one more question just for direction? You've got a beach that we've just already done and it's all full of rock and I followed my direction to call, I called federal government, I called provincial, and all these... and all these, and the town, who says it's not their responsibility, it's province. And the province have literally turned around and said, good luck. If you think you can get anything done with getting these rocks removed. And I literally witnessed this every single day. There's nobody at that new beach because of all the rocks in the water. Is the way to do something and deal with the province or to come to you to work together? Because me, as a citizen, I'm, I'm getting nowhere.
You're talking that beach closer to Ashett, right?
It's the, and the, and the, uh, back room, right there. It's literally such a waste of all the money they put into that.
Yeah, and they did, they did expand, they did expand that beach, made it, uh, made it bigger. In fact, all the dirt that they used from that, they built up the soccer fields and that, that's where they use that.
And nobody swims there.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody. So that one question, should I call, you live a beach over there?
I, I think we have and I think what we'll do as a council too is maybe look at, asking a, uh, asking the province and, and again, for, for maybe something to get sorted out and even those groynes that are on Ash and those areas too, those rocks have tilted down and maybe they can, at this point in time, because it's so low, maybe there's an opportunity that they can do that. Again, a lot of times what happens is, uh, they have X amount of dollars as well. And what it will sometimes take is a joint cooperation with the town in that. So again, what happens with that and where we get some of the concerns is that it's a provincial piece of property. They're not maintaining and now the town steps in and using their assets and using their funding to help something like that. So those are the fine lines that we have to, we have to sit on sometimes is the cooperation between us and them. And, uh, and again, you get two sides of the story where it's a provincial asset and the province should be doing. Why should the taxpayers of Winnipeg Beach, uh, be doing that? You know, so those are the kinds of things that we have to keep in mind. One over here, oh, okay.
Hi, please, uh, Boulevard on.
Oh, yeah.
Road. What about derelict vehicles? There's, uh, a couple parked on, on, uh, Larch that have been there for years on the boulevard. And they sit there and they don't move, they never move. Uh, even people's trailers are sitting on boulevards for years. So just wondering if anybody else is complaining about that.
Have you put that to the town office, like, uh?
I think so.
The locations? With the vehicles, if I may, with vehicles, what happens with vehicles? If a, we have a definition of a derelict vehicle in our bylaws. Now, like, in our bylaw, you could cover a vehicle, let's say they have an old, old vehicle that they're working on. They're supposed to be covered with a tart. Uh, now, other things are that puts a, a wrinkle into things. If it's insured or even has, even has storage insurance, unfortunately, we can't deem that as a derelict vehicle because there's insurance on that kinda stuff. So that's what happens is when we get them report, we go take a look at it. And if they turn around and they provide us proof that they have insurance on it, it's not deemed. But if they're physically, you know, the car is up, the wheels are off, the bumpers are off, those kinda things, uh, that we can then look at as a derelict type vehicle.
Or if it's on a boulevard, they can't have it.
Can't have it on the boulevard. So, uh, you said Larch Avenue? And which other one was it?
Uh, well, there's a couple of trailers parked also on that, on that same street.
On Larch, okay, okay. We'll mark that down and get our bylaw to look at it. At the back there, sir.
My twenty, Ken, should I ask the six fifty park? Uh, that's a speed sign, I do it with the fellow here, uh, it's right in front of my place. And, uh, when it first came up and that, I, I did notice a lot of cars, it's all of a sudden slamming on the brakes because it starts flashing, right? And, uh, plus the fact, I guess, when I parked in my driveway, it looks like there could be a hidden car or the, I mean, bushes, ain't so, maybe slow down. But then if it does, I don't know, once they get past my place and, and they slow down, also they're gaining speed again. By the time they get to number nine, they're about fifty, they're at eighty, seventy, seventy-five, sixty-five, whatever, right? And, uh, but the biggest disheartening thing is I've seen the RCMP go flying through there too. And I've even, they've looked, they, uh, this, they go by. And, uh, the trucks, have them trucks coming through, like, they're big vehicles, you know, that can do a lot more damage than a car. And, uh, tractor trailer trucks coming through with their jay break. Like that alone is not, you can't do that in town limits. So the speed sign, I can say it does help, right? But I noticed it was gone the weekend before the long weekend. It should have been here, especially if, like, with all the entertainment on the stage and stuff like that. Like, the last weekend of the summer, I think very, very heavy traffic. It would have been nice to see it this day after that weekend. Uh, secondly, derelict vehicles. I noticed they said Eddie Walker Corner's got a nice plaque and I have a post on the corner. There's got, derelict cars have been sitting in their front yard for years and years and years, like, why? Uh, I got a letter a few years back on second premises because my fuel wasn't cut. Property behind me, which I don't own anymore, uh, apparently somebody from Steinberg bought it. He cut it twice over all those years that he purchased that property from the town. Like, if you got a bylaw council, well, I got a letter, I'm sure this guy should have gotten one, then those derelict vehicles, like, that, that should have come out too. Thank you, thank you very, oh, kudos to the, to Aaron, the counselors for excellent job, worked through this COVID and having entertainment with the staples and stuff, uh, like.
Thank you very much. Okay, just, uh, what we'll do again, uh, I know what we've done in the past is we've sent some letters in the past to, uh, the different companies that, uh, gravel companies and that to ask them that they watch your speeches as they're coming in through town. We have done that. Excuse me.
We have to ask the RCMP, why do you refuse to celebrate our data? We're still having problems, so. Yeah, because the RCMP did visit with us and they were more than willing to take the data that they collect from those. So I'm not sure if we, if they've actually received any, if they have, okay.
Yeah, but the RCMP did receive our data. Their problem is, is again, that's why we needed this and this is also for highways so that they can see the, the difference. All we can do is, you know, at X month, when it's fifty, if they reduce it, it's so hard. You would wish people would take responsibility on their responsibility for themselves and not do that. But, you know, unfortunately, that's not happening. But what we do is with the data, we can, we can see trends, what times these things are. So then the, the RCMP could better, better utilize their radar vehicles. They know if it's happening between this time, they can come there and, uh, and do some ticketing.
That's what happens, so we can use all the long, we gotta get it right there.
Oh, we say two twenty-nine is a gold mine.
Yes, uh, we had a question here, uh, okay, I think it was you first there, yes?
Well, I'm, uh, I've been a resident here now for five years.
What, what's your name?
Martin Helen Montague.
Okay.
And I live at five thirty-three Old Avenue. Um, my concern here is since I've been here and I find, uh, it's a bit difficult and hard to understand why we don't have more activities for seniors active living. I know there is a lot of government, there's government grants out there, um, just wondering if they've been applied for. There is also one that I read about last night, it's called the New Horizon Seniors Funding. Twenty-five thousand dollar grant that's there for activities for seniors. Uh, I'm an advocate for seniors. I feel we should, uh, if you feel as a senior, you wanna be active, it should be promoted. It should be supported and, uh, it should be made open to the public, that it's all available to them. And I also was wondering, I know they have a great program for seniors in Gimli, but do we all have to go to Gimli? We have a beautiful town here that we could be using. We have a beautiful facility here that we could do a few renovations to, that could be, uh, accessible to everybody in the community. And I hope since I've been here, actually in the African community, you'd be surprised with the people on the city that come to your campground in the summer, I go to the rental park, but they come here in the summer, they meet us at this facility. They're very happy, they're contented. Uh, it's something that we have to promote. Because a lot of the people that's coming out here and going to provincial campgrounds, they're not teenagers. They're our seniors, the seniors like myself and all of us sitting here right now and, uh.
I'm standing here.
It is, and yes, so I think we need to promote seniors to active living as much as, much as possible. And myself, I'm certainly going to volunteer and do all I possibly can to have that put into place here in our community. I have to work with the counselors, do whatever I have to do. It's, it's a must.
Thank you very, did you want to comment?
Yeah, and, and that's what I, you know, I touched on is that we've sort of gotta give, uh, our rec director a little more direction. Um, and that's why I like, yeah, you have a community-based committee to offer up these suggestions and to sort of help our rec director with direction on, on where we need to go. I do agree, I think we are lacking, uh, we are really lacking.
Yes, we are lacking. We have, we have, we have to be on this boat, we are lacking.
Correct, correct.
Because that, I, I play pickleball, so I'm not your advocate for pickleball, but everybody has a place here in this community. I'll be pickleball, I support it.
Correct.
But, uh, the thing is, uh, it, it could be like just yesterday in the, four people from another community, Whiteville, Whiteville, whatever. Like, I'm new here, I can't pronounce all the names yet, but they came here and joined us yesterday. They were very happy.
Yes.
Very happy. And it's a great group of people that's here, especially after seniors, and I think we could make this community great. For seniors and, okay, it's a retirement community, so who's coming in? It's the seniors. And I agree with that, committee would be great, as much input as we possibly can have for seniors, I think it would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you all for doing a great job and thank you for your time.
Just, uh, just a couple of comments with regards to, uh, funding.
Yes.
Whenever there's an opportunity, our rec, uh, our rec manager, he will look for those fundings and apply for those fundings and try to find some kind of program. And he's been very, we've been very fortunate that we've had, uh, quite a bit of funding that for activities that he was, has been able to secure. Winnipeg Beach does have a seniors, uh, organization and they're usually, they usually meet in, uh, in the Legion as well. They play, they play bridge, uh, cribs, uh, they have, uh, it's a nice group in there uh, that they, they do, uh, they do have a, a group here in, uh, in Winnipeg Beach.
Is that on the website, council? We might wanna get that out there as well.
Like, because I don't know if seeing that on the website.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's on the Legion, is it?
Uh, it's not, no, okay, well, we can, Jean?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment, uh, with regard to, um, grants and funding. Um, I have had some conversations, uh, Kerry was there, Barry, Larry, Alan and myself when, um, we were discussing things about economic development and recreation. We'd like to start, um, doing some planning ahead of these grants coming out.
That's right.
Prioritizing, uh, what sort of things we would like, you know, what would get the priority. So that we're setting Alan best up so that when he does see these grants, he's already prepared and has things that he would like to see done so that he can apply for them instead of him seeing the grant and wondering what we can do.
But, I mean, we, how can I put this that I don't wanna? You can't, how can I say, you can't have, like, the rec, I don't think it's possible to have that as one person trying to do multiple tasks. Like, he's one individual, he's gotta organize all, all the recreation and mind dancing and whatever. I mean, and then apply for those grants on top of that. It's, it's, it's a pile of work, so I don't know, but one person doing all of that is a, I know he has an assistant, but still, but it's, it's, and, you know, people with place stuff, you know, and it's, it's, it's quite a work though, it's quite a work.
That's why, yes, that's why we talked about it as a council and perhaps getting some community involvement. Doing the planning ahead of time so that when it's all laid out and ready to go and then when a grant comes available, he sees what we've got planned and he's gonna apply, you know, use to apply for that grant. Not he's doing all of that, but that's doing the planning and, and, you know, and making sure that we have, if there's, um, quarter required because of some building or something required with the project or with the event, all that be laid up in order to make better support him in, in being able to apply to whatever.
Well, thank you very much for your time, thank you all for doing a great job and responding out there.
Thank you, the gentleman, yes, sir?
Hi, Martin, that's Kate, I live on Churchill Road. Uh, two questions. Uh, one, uh, for Daryl, uh, would be, uh, as I understand it, Robinson, you go down to the main road in front of the beach, that and then back up, that's all provincial highway.
Correct.
Is there any ongoing talks to get that fixed? Because it is really, that project is terrible. Robinson, you know, as it comes up, especially near the tracks, when you come down and then you know, the, at the north end of the main street where there's that beach access, there's a huge gap in the road. Is there any, are we looking at getting that fixed? We, we, I, I, just wanted to, is there any conversation?
We can actually just call the province provincial road, that piece.
Well, the whole, the whole, I had mentioned earlier that, uh, we are looking at that whole area there. If we're gonna do work for our sidewalks and we're gonna do works, uh, work on that, we wanna combine all that work because if you notice down the main street as well, some of the.
Yeah.
And that's, that is a culvert that has collapsed. So what we wanna do is we want, again, we wanna best utilize, uh, our taxpayers' money. So what we wanna do at the same time when we're doing that, because the road might change a bit, depending if we go and extend sidewalks, for example, uh, we will work with the province in order to get that whole thing redone at the same time. Rather than, you know, going out next year or whenever, let's say we had done it this year, then we decide to do other work. Well, that kinda would have been a waste of money kinda thing. So we wanna make sure we've been, better utilized our funding in order to get what we want to get accomplished there. We, we're having a conversation with that and in fact, we've, we've talked about, you know, trying to maybe seeking out, uh, seeking out a company that would, would provide us a, uh, uh, you know, a plan.
We're trying to be part of the law.
Yeah, and, and the province will be part of that conversation with us. And they, and they've been really, the province, just so you know, they've been really good when it comes to their roadways and, and doing that. So they've been pretty good with that.
My second question is, uh, as you're heading northbound on number nine, you come up to Chris says, oh, right on the corner of the old golf course?
Yes.
We have that sign that says, you know.
Yes.
Is there any thought of maybe taking that one down? Re, maybe some places in, in town, but put up an LED sign? Because people drive by, they have no idea they're in Winnipeg Beach. And the same with coming, uh, going southbound. You have one little sign that says Winnipeg Beach Business District. But when you, in the summer, right on that corner at, uh, the Domo, it's, it's like Mushroom City with all the garage sales and yard sales. And you, you just drive by, you don't see that sign. Is there any thought of getting bigger signs so that we, I know you gotta comply with highways and they can only be so big and so bright and everything. But LED sign would be better because then you'd be drawing people in.
We're talking with the business.
Not standing up.
Yeah. The business, uh, blue Winnipeg downtown sign, was the Domo.
Yeah, the blue.
Do you recommend to get a bigger sign there?
Yeah, that, I'm saying like.
It's something we can look at for sure.
Yeah, I'm saying like, when you're looking at the grants, right? Like maybe you have signs that say, especially if you get the LED one or something that's a little bit brighter than that one, the one that's been there for, I don't know, ten, fifty years, you know? Uh, it's a very nice sign, don't get me wrong, but you could also put that on a LED.
What I can tell you is that in fact, in fact, there was a discussion with getting an LED, probably remember that about, uh, maybe six, seven years ago when we were looking at getting pricing for that sign and because of the old sign, we wanted to improve it. When we looked at the cost for the, at that time, for the LED signs, they were, it was extremely expensive to get an LED sign. And at council at the time, thought they wanted to make it look nicer with, uh, you know, the, the thing that we have going there. And, uh, we got a bid, uh, from, uh, from a contractor to do it and it was a really reasonable cost for us to do it. And that's why we did it at that time. In saying that as well, when we were first looking at the LED signs for the highways, like speed signs, they were very expensive back then too. They were, I think, six, seven thousand dollars for one. What we found is the price have dropped down there. So again, it might be something and again, that piece of property as well is, is not our property where it sits. So there could be an opportunity at some point in time to change that. Uh, and again, it's something that council can discuss that and we can, can see what kinda cost we could look at that for LEDs because most communities are in fact. because most communities are in fact going with the LED signs, and that you could program and have different things on there.
Yeah, that would make us stand out.
Yeah.
Honestly, when you're, when you're going north towards Gimli, you're, you know, you get the Nodder, you've got, that one, you've got, when it's a beach, it's just like in Sandy Hook, and people don't recognize.
Yeah.
This is what could stand out, people go there, it's a beach, you know?
Yes.
It's a man's own place.
Yes.
You know, and you could also get, um, maybe you could get, um, some of the businesses in here to put advertising, help, you know, you run the thing, help, it could bring down the cost to the town.
Yeah, a, and with the LED, it's a lot easier to program and have that kind of information.
Yeah, we were, we were exploring, uh, signage, digital signage for, you know, the outside of the community center, the inside of the community center, so we have a good idea right now. The signage is substantially cheaper now.
Oh, yes, of course.
With remote capabilities, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, uh.
Ma'am?
Lorraine Anderson, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm representing the Lakeside Seniors unofficially, but they've had meetings with me, they play cards with, on Wednesday at one P M. And privilege on Monday at one P M, everyone is welcome to attend. Uh, they are looking for volunteers, this is sort of, they've been operating for years, but the same executive, the same volunteers, as you know, in every organization, and they want to step down in this group. They've even asked the Legion to take over the cards, but we have a shortage of volunteers too. So that is something that anyone interested in getting involved, they'd be more than happy to hear your view.
Lorraine, would you mind just sending a little note to Carrie on that, just so that we can post it out?
And, uh, also, as far as the Legion goes for the rest, we advertise all of our events with the town. They're always notified, uh, we will be sending them as scheduled for the year two thousand twenty-two. We had started our craft sales the second week in September back in two thousand eleven, and then the town came in with their town sales in, in, uh, two thousand fourteen. But irregardless, we have, because we're indoors, so we can accommodate a little later in the year, we're gonna go to September twenty-fourth next year, but we are certainly asking that they don't change their dates and plan something major on that date.
Yeah, we have to coordinate our dates.
Yes, but we have, in the beginning, when we started our sales, the rec center was operating at the end, at the beginning of October, the end of September. So I had gone to the beginning of September to avoid that. So this time when we do it, we want an official letter back from the town stating they will not plan something major that takes all the work.
Yeah.
At the same time, especially the same time of the event. So anyway, we'll be sending that letter over sometime next week on our schedule, projected, because of COVID, it's all projected. But, uh, I appreciate what the town does for us greatly. And, uh, your volunteerism the other day was very appreciated, and thank you very much. Ready to make me post tomorrow morning?
Sure. Timosak.
I have two, uh, we're almost running out of time, and I have two people that had their hands up. Uh, yes, the young lady with the black mask, no, not, not the young lady with the blue.
Question I'd like to ask would be for Larry, he mentioned a crosswalk.
Yeah.
I'm curious where would, could be considered? And is it the, is it because it would be, I'm assuming on number nine, that it would be the province, it would be highways? So it's not, like, we want one or not, it's whether it's just, they would go, what?
Exactly, it's highways, uh, we, we weren't sure how it would work, because crossing, let's say, for example, if you were to cross, uh, over, around the domo, for, for example, where would you walk once you get across the street? Where's the sidewalk? So there's a lot of different things that go into the planning, but we've thrown it out there for the province to see if we could, knowing how slow they were, to get the ball rolling.
And then once it, if they said yes, then you're stuck with where they decided to go.
That is, again, because of their study? Yeah, we would be stuck.
The way it is now, the public wouldn't approve it, because like Larry says, it's not going to take them to, to stop.
Okay. And then I just have one other, uh, question. Um, I went to the, the dump, they have, uh, three compost, okay? And, um, we were just, uh, I was told that, uh, they have sifted compost and they have dirty compost, I guess, whatever. And they said, because it's from Winnipeg Beach, you can't take the sifted compost, because you didn't pay half the price to have it sifted. I'm just curious, um, why they, they pulled out? Is this a lot of money?
I, I can speak on that. Yeah, that was something, and in fact, our, uh, our contract for the, for the, uh, for the nuisance grant is coming up, and, uh, we're gonna be in discussion with them, uh, it's up in December. Uh, just so you know, the, the cost for having, utilizing their site is fifty-three thousand dollars a year that we are paying them. Uh, they had proposed, again, I don't understand why, they had proposed that if we wanted the good stuff, we'd have to pay this exorbitant amount of money for the good stuff. But we didn't, we didn't really feel it was a, we were saddened by that, that they, they would do that, because we're putting it in there as well, and we're already paying quite a bit of, uh, quite a bit for that nuisance grant. So, uh, it's coming up, uh, we can put in the discussion and see if maybe we can do something. But everything comes at a price, and, uh, we have to weigh what the costs are and what the benefits are, so. Uh, and we have a question here, this will be our last question, yes?
Uh, thank you, good morning, Jen, Morier, uh, I live on South Avenue, and I've just moved here one year and one month ago.
Oh, good.
Really enjoying, uh, my time here in Winnipeg Beach.
Great.
Comment about garbage.
Yes.
I observed over the summer, and we have a very hot summer, but, um, the young ladies that I observed multiple times jumping down off of the truck and hauling in the garbage. They didn't have decent boots, they did not have gloves, and, you know, they would be wearing tank tops or something, no marked vests. I just wondered if that was the norm or if they're, they're outfitted. The other thing I noticed was that right behind my home, they, uh, did the compacting thing. And I watched the garbage and whatnot dripping out of the body, and they didn't come to shovel it, scoop it back in. There was, uh, liquid waste and there was broken glass that pushed through that. So I just wanted to know if that was something that is within your control? Uh, just, and, and again, thank you very much for the opportunity to listen to what this community is all about, I'm loving it.
Great, I just, uh, just to remind if I may, uh, it's, uh, the garbage contract is bid it out. So these are independent contractors that are doing this kind of work. Uh, you know, you would hope that, we're gonna, I'll get Gary to maybe talk to him about, uh, their safety protocols for, for that. Again, I would think if there was, uh, a government agency that came by and saw them, they might have some issues with it. Unfortunately, this is a contracted, uh, contracted situation. If you see that kind of stuff happening and there's broken glass and that, all you have to do is notify the office, and they can speak to them, they've been really good to deal with situations that occur. So that, that was our last question. What I want to recommend to, to people, if they have additional questions, you can send them to the town office, and we can answer those questions. We'll be here for a couple more minutes, if you want to speak to us as individuals or what have you, and then we can, we can do that. I, I see basically two questions, uh, two hands coming up, there aren't any more hands, right? There's that one, and then there was yourself, okay.
I just wanted to comment on, on the, on the garbage, because I seen that these young girls in that food are garbage.
Yeah.
Who puts a ten year old for that? Who's that ten, is that through the town?
That's through the town, yeah.
You've got a list in there how it's supposed to be dressed and, and proper protocol for safety and whatnot.
Yeah, and we're gonna, we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at our contract and see what we have in there. Okay, you've had, we'll allow you your last one, because it's only a minute over.
It's a quick one, uh, Yvonne Frosty, twenty-one Fifth Avenue. I'm just wondering what the rules are or bylaws? If you have a neighbor with a huge extending branch on your tree, uh, that's already had problems, it, it's directly over my property, over my garage.
Yeah.
Is there a responsibility for them to cut that down if it's posing a threat to the property? I was told when you have insurance, what's a big deal, you get yourself a new shed.
Yeah, no, my, my understanding on that, uh, with trees on private property, that's the homeowner's responsibility. However, what, uh, what has happened in the past and what we've seen, and, and Mr. Banks can, uh, can attest to it, is that if you see something like that, if you notify your neighbor that, that, that you're concerned about those trees falling onto your property and damage to your property, and you send them a letter, uh, then their insurance company would be responsible for your damage. Because what happens now, if it falls on your tree, on your, on your, uh, house, the neighbors, it's on your house, your insurance.
No, but what about if it's not a safety issue, you just don't want their branch hanging in your yard?
Is, is that what it is, or is it a safety issue?
No, no, that's come up before.
No, it is over, directly over my, uh, my garage.
Yeah.
And they already have problems with that tree.
Yeah.
And I'm just waiting for this huge branch to come in, and I notified them, and the response was, well, you have, uh, we, we've all got insurance, you'll get yourself a new shed, I don't want a new shed.
Larry?
Um, if, if you've noticed anything wrong with that tree, rot or, or potential hazard, and you, and it happened to me, because, uh, my neighbor's tree fell on, on my cottage, and I called the insurance company and said, okay, you're deducted two thousand dollars. I said, my deductible was their tree. I said, have you written a letter to them and sent it to us stating that there were some issues, some concerns, that I would not be responsible for my deductibles?
So you have to notify, just notify them in writing?
In writing and give a copy to your insurance company.
To my insurance company?
Yes.
Okay, but just to say, not every insurance company is the same, so probably the suggestion would be to check with your insurance company.
So.
If there's anything you can do to protect yourself or something.
Yeah, so on that note, again, thank you so much for coming out. I hope we were able to answer some of your questions. And again, any questions, concerns, if you could please just forward them to the C A O, and we should, uh, we'll, uh, we'll try to answer them for you. Thank you very much again.